At this time, we'll call to order the May 5th meeting of the Hamilton County Council. Madam Auditor, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Brad Beaver.
Here.
Fred Glenn.
Present.
Amy Masalomani.
Present.
Steve Schwartz.
Present.
Steve Nation.
Here.
Sue Mackey.
Here.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Madam President, you have a forum.
Thank you so much. Today, I will lead the invocation and pledge, if you could please rise, bow your heads. We'll take a moment of silence to pray in your own way. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a motion and a second for the reading and approval of the minutes from our regular meeting April 7.
Motion approved.
So moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. This time, we'll look to public comments. Seeing no public comments, we will move on to committee and officer reports. Under President, I do have a few items first. I'd like to ask Dan Stevens to come to the podium to honor one of our council members for time of service.
Thank you, Madam President. As you all know, Hamilton County has a tradition of recognizing service to the taxpayers and citizens of this county, to employees and elected officials in five-year increments. This year, our process was somewhat bifurcated or screwed up in such that it was not a uniform process. We've kind of done it individually. So tonight is, I think, the first opportunity we've had where most of the council members and Councilman Glenn have been here all in person to honor this recognition. So Councilman Glenn, on behalf of the county commissioners and the citizens of Hamilton County, we'd like to thank you for five years of service to Hamilton County. We have a certificate honoring that and a pin to wear on your blade.
Oh, cool. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dan. Thank you, Fred, for your service as well. Second item on my agenda, and we have Danielle here to give us an update on the rental assistance program as well as some housing collaborative new initiative.
Yeah. Good evening, council members. Just a quick update for you. We have, as of just a few minutes ago when I looked, we've awarded over 506 cases, and that's equaled almost a little over $1.5 million in our county for assistance. That is rent and utilities. We have over 1,200-ish cases. I don't know, I don't know the last two numbers, but I know the first two numbers as of this morning. So we could roughly get anywhere from 20 to 30 applications a day through the program. So we are looking forward and knowing that we'll probably definitely be spending all the money here for this ERP 1.0 now it's called. Also, I wanted to give you guys just an update, knowing that ARP is coming, which is the new fund from the American Recovery. Yes, Rescue, I know, I get all these acronyms confused, right? So I wanted to let you guys know, just to keep you guys abreast of what's going on. We have created a housing collaborative, and the collaborative is going to be creating a proposal for the Hamilton County Commissioners and County Council on approach to how to improve housing options here in Hamilton County. In that collaborative, we have an array of people, and some of them are here in the audience, but everything from schools to Aspire, to Cornerstone, Information Systems, to Townships, to Good Samaritan Commissioners. I know that we've reached out to a couple of the county council members. Hamilton County Community Foundation, Youth Assistance, HAND, Hedges, IHCD, Indianapolis MPO, Merciful Help, MyBor, Noblesville Housing Authority, Old National Bank, PNC Bank, Prevail, Salvation Army, Shepherd Center. And we are also reached out to all the city planners to have representatives on there as well, and a few builders within our community. So just wanted to kind of give you guys an update on that, so that way we can come forward with a big broader plan than siloed plans. Any questions?
Is that work at through HAND? Is that, like, when you're talking about housing options, I mean, what you, they did one in Home Place, they built a
Right, we're going to be creating a overarching countywide plan with this new funding coming through, through this American Rescue Plan program. Thank you, Robin, I appreciate that nod. Gotcha, girl. So with that funding, we know that there's going to be a proposal for housing in there. So we want to make sure that all of us come together rather than coming together separately. Does that make sense?
Thank you so much, Danielle.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Two other items, from the standpoint of an update for council as far as the ERP. They have selected three companies to move on to the next phase, which is more of a test script phase, which is actually great, so happy to hear that. And then I have worked with Commissioner Harebrandt. We have solidified a joint session regarding 37. We hope to have updated financials at the end of June, so that meeting is scheduled for June 25th at 8:30 a.m. There will be a virtual option, otherwise it will be, I'm sorry, it will be at the Highway Department coinciding with the standard highway meeting. So mark your calendars there. And that is all I have, Mr. Vice President.
Just a couple of updates for council. The campground has got some new rules up at Cotaywee Park. I'll pass these out if you wish. So I've been fielding a few phone calls on these. Ken, if you'll pass those out, thank you.
Plenty of them.
Yep, a lot of, a lot of changes, a lot of changes. I think it's all for the good. And then one other update, I've also had a lot of calls on the Carrigan Bridge project. That's Carrigan Road over Morris Reservoir. I've fielded a lot of calls on this, and they are on target. I have talked to the supervisor doing the project several times, and they are on target for May 29th. So I have some other handouts I'll pass away as well.
May 29th, what was that for, Ken?
The Carrigan Bridge over Morris Reservoir.
Do you know anything about the cabins that are supposed to be built across Cotaywee? Is there sort of progress to that?
I've not heard any updates on that yet. Not yet. Ken, I'll give you this update if you'll pass it along. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Highway.
Highway, we met yesterday. We have several items that will be discussed later on the agenda. One item that was passed out to the committee was the resurfacing plans for 2021 and 2022. We'll make those available to the rest of the council.
Thank you. Finance.
We did not have a meeting, we got one scheduled this month on the 18th.
Thank you. Personnel.
Personnel, we did not meet, but we did field several polls, and you will see those reflected on our agenda.
Thank you, and do we have any miscellaneous items?
I got two things under miscellaneous. One is, we had a meeting, and you were on the phone for the Previa Domestic Violence Shelter. They started to give us numbers, it was, it was a very productive meeting. Councilman Nation, Amy was on the phone, Ken Alexander, myself, Commissioner Harebrandt. Members of Prevail were there. I think we're getting a lot farther now than we have in the past. We started to talk about numbers, location. So we got a finance committee, that's one of the things we're going to be discussing in finance committee on the 18th, is the dollar amount. So we want to get it vetted from Mike Reuter, and then we want to bring some information back to council. And we do have a PDF to do, do we forward out that PDF version?
I can send it if you'd like to.
Send it to the rest of the council.
Absolutely.
I'd like them to see, just see that, yeah. I think if it works out the way, what direction it's going, we could actually get this done this time, which is a really good thing. So that's, that's the first thing. And then we only got two bids for the audit that we're going to start on. And I think that's because I was discussing this with other people, and it's just a highly, that's a very highly specialized thing. And we're going to be getting together and discussing those bids, the committee for the audit. And we will be discussing the numbers that we've gotten so far. That's another thing we'll be discussing in the finance committee as well, so.
Will you take the reins and coordinate with Ken, myself, Mark for that meeting?
Yeah, we started that, and I'll, and I'll send you something. We're trying to, we should hopefully get together for, I don't know, coffee or something on that when I really kind of dig into those, those proposals. And on the, back on the domestic violence shelter, KPMG or RQAW is coming, the people that are doing that, we asked them to come here and do a presentation at our next council meeting. And hopefully they'll have something to put in front of council. We'll have something on the agenda for, just that, you know, the preliminary plans amount, because everything they've done so far has been pro bono, is, you know, just trying to help out Prevail. So, so there'll be something, should be something on the agenda next month for the, you know, just the, just the planning portion of that, of the domestic violence shelter.
Thank you. Anybody else with?
Fred, I don't know, I have one thing.
Sure.
You mentioned the audit. I, I want to kind of point out that the intent of that RFQ, which was RFQ, was to create opportunities for us to look and help support departments within the organization as they plan for growth and plan for their business. And so I think some people might have read the advertisement that went out in that, and maybe thought of it as something different. And so I don't know if you want to share?
Yeah, we're not going back, I, you know, going back, I don't know, somebody asked me for going back 10 years, or I, I just don't think that's our intent. Our, it's basically, if you want to, if department heads want to really have a better handle on what we're doing, and we're starting in the public safety portion of all the public safety departments of county government, you know, not just because that's our biggest expenditure, because the sheriff was gracious enough to come forward and volunteer for that. And, but, you know, it's, it's a performance audit. It's not like we're thinking anyone's doing anything wrong, but it's, it's, you know, we're not trying to audit their books back 10 years or anything like that. That's not what, what the intent of that will be.
It's all ensuring efficiencies.
Yeah, efficiencies, exactly, exactly.
And for the people out in the audience who are listening, it, you know, we are adding a court and looking at how we are handling that as an organization. This is going to give us some of the backbone and actual data to support directions and decisions that we're going to make. So that, that's why it exists, that, that's why we put it out there, and looking forward to having that start off and get going.
Anything else from you, Ken?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Sue, Steve Nation, Steve Schwartz, anything?
No.
Okay. We will move along to unfinished business. I know we had the board appointments. My understanding is, we did get some documents from some of those last month that were still outstanding. I also understand that we don't have somebody yet to fill Sheridan. We had two additional. We had Chris Woodard, who declined the appointment for Soil and Water. Has anybody?
Yeah, I, I am, I spoke with Soil, Water, there is a person that's interested. They are attending the next meeting to see if it's something that fits within their focus, so.
Pending?
I'm not allowed to share that right now, but yes, we have someone interested, because.
Okay, so Soil and Water is pending, Sheridan is still pending. And then we do have, Brad, you were on the security, we had you on the Security Committee, but there really wasn't.
There is no security.
Right, so do we want to disband this, so we can remove it? Okay, do I need a motion to do so, or can that just be done?
I'm motion to fire Brad Beaver from the Security Committee.
Okay. I resign from the Security Committee.
We're going to disband the Security Committee, so can I have a motion for you to disband?
Disband the Security Committee.
And then is there a second? So moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, no longer exists. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Moving on, no tabled business, new business, approval of vendor claims.
So moved.
Second.
So moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, grant appropriation and transfers. Item 1 through 4 can be combined. These are grant reimbursements, just appropriating appropriately.
Motion to combine. Two separate ones, right, motion to combine?
Yes.
Second.
So moved in second to combine, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
So moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item C, we have the Career Centers. I will pass off to Ken Alexander to introduce.
We have a lot of paper today.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do I just tell you what I want to advance?
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay, great. Fellow members of council, Ken Alexander. I am here today because I started in a career in an industry that was, has been struggling for people. It was, became a passion of mine early in my career about finding workforce. Workforce that continues to grow and age and not being replaced by younger people in our community. This, this started early in my career, but has extended on well beyond. And in the course of that time, if you don't mind moving one slide, please. In the course of that time, I've, I've come across many people in the industry, and it's amazing to see the path that they take to get into the field of construction. Without belaboring, which I'm sure you all fellow counselors are tired of hearing me talk many times in the council, I'm going to turn it over to a friend of mine from the industry who is going to talk about his personal experience and his, and his role and how he grew within the, within the trades and moving into this organization. So with that, Chip Parsley.
So I'm a, I'm a 20-year resident of Westfield, Indiana. I started, I have five kids, going through the high school. Back in 1989, I graduated from high school and didn't have much direction, went to college for a couple of years, and kind of struggled with that a little bit, got out, kind of went around a couple of different jobs. When I turned 25, my father, who's a union sheet metal worker, suggested I look into the trades. I never thought about it, was never really presented to me in any formal thing in school. And so I got into it and spent five years in his apprenticeship, earned my associate's degree from Ivy Tech, and became a journeyman sheet metal worker. After that, I had the opportunity to be a project manager and estimator. I've owned my own shop, and I currently work for Pointer Sheet Metal, which is one of the largest sheet metal contractors in the Midwest. We do work all over the country. And I've been tasked with leading and being the director of the prefabrication business for them, which is looking at how to take construction and turn it into a different model. Rather than onsite construction, it goes to offsite manufacturing. And we're looking to grow that business, which we'll need, I think, at the time, we get this business up and going, maybe possibly even 100 people. So we'll need people coming from the high schools and Ivy Techs to, to create that business. And so currently, we are in a labor shortage for construction workers. And this would be a great program that I think would, would help greatly, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as we go, this is, this has been a labor of love that I, that was introduced, and quite frankly, I've got to give a lot of credit to our fellow counselor, Judge Steve Nation, who really took this and was, was able to convince, well, not convince, but able to get all the right parties in, in the room. And you'll see them listed on the screen. And so as, as we move forward with the presentation, I'm going to turn this over to them, because they're the ones that really make this happen. They are the ones that understand the need. The packet in front of you is the presentation you're going to see. We're going to try and get through this as quickly as possible. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Bob and Jack Russell to represent the, I'm sorry, Bob DuBois and Jack Russell, you're not married, so. So to, to talk about the chambers, the chambers involvement in this. We're not married to each other. Thank you, Ken. Thank you for letting us come forward here today. Bob DuBois with the Noblesville Chamber of Commerce, and I'm pleased to be here with my colleague, Jack. And we've had, some, many of us have had this, this conversation over the past couple of years about the, all of the good things that are going on in Hamilton County. But the real struggle of our continued growth is meeting our workforce demands. That is the top issue. It's been the top issue, at least for my, my seven years here, living here in Hamilton County and six years at the Chamber. And it's going to look that way going, going forward. And we've done so many good things together, where we collaborate together on the 21st Century Talent Network. HC Win came together and created a couple of, a couple of programs. The Workforce Recovery Effort. When we come together as a county, we can do great things in this area. There seems to be a missing link, and the missing link is good quality CTE education programs that reside in Hamilton County. We can do this. We can bring these programs home to the, to our community. We need to be nimble. We need to be able to react to the needs of the business community today and what they forecast in the, in the near-term future. And with local control of a program, we have the ability to, to ebb and flow shift as needed to meet the true needs in Hamilton County. And, and it's, it's a bit overdue, but sometimes it takes, it takes the right time, and it takes some of the right leadership to help bring us all together. I, I think I'm going to leave it there. Because I think you all know the need and the story.
Well, Bob, Bob and I were told we had 25 minutes, so we'll make this a little shorter. But, but I really, you know, in essence, I want to kind of reiterate what Bob's saying is, the things that we're hearing are not only those that are existing businesses today, but even during a pandemic, this county has seen an increase in new businesses calling Hamilton County home. And whether you're biomedicine in Fishers, whether it's independent car dealership financing, $6 billion industry that's along the Meridian Corridor, this is in our own backyard. And it's new people coming in, new businesses coming in, along with existing ones. And I'll make it short and sweet. I had the opportunity to graduate from the University of Oklahoma with my economic development degree, and site selectors on there said there are three components to an economic development and site selecting. Number one is public safety, number two is the schools, and number three is your labor and workforce. And with those three components, I really believe Hamilton County has the best public safety and the best schools, and we have an opportunity with something like this to also have the next best workforce in our state, and really our region. And Bob and I have sat in a lot of meetings with a lot of hours around this. And this was the first time where we got the opportunity to talk before this meeting and feel as though something like this is worth the last five, six, seven, eight years of us sitting in meetings after meeting saying, what are we going to do? And I truly believe that this is it right here, so, thank you.
A CTE center here in Hamilton County will give us the ability to better connect employers with their future workforce. There'll be more internships, more apprentice-like programs, more job shadowing opportunities, a real better understanding of all the cool companies that we get the chance to work with every day that our kids don't know about. They drive by those big buildings and wonder what goes on. This is a chance to connect all, connect all of that and give some kids a real exposure to all the different careers that are here, right here in Hamilton County. We'd like to keep there, 2%, only 2% of our kids are going out, they're going out of the county for this type of training. Wouldn't it be wonderful if 10 or 15% of our, of our kids could get the, those services right here in our community, get that, that career exploration, better understand what their future could hold here in Hamilton County? So hopefully you'll, you'll support the request that will be forthcoming, and we appreciate your time and your work on this.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll pass it on.
Thank you. I'll pass it on.
Yes, Dr. Arrowood. The big guns are coming in now. They're professionals.
Good evening. I'm Derek Carroll, and I'm honored to be the superintendent in Hamilton High School Corporation. So I'm going to tell you a little bit of a story. I am the senior superintendent in Hamilton County now. I didn't know when that happened, but I started in Hamilton County as superintendent at Sheridan in 2006. And at that time, Lynn Layman was superintendent at Noblesville, Barb Underwood was superintendent at Carmel, Concedo Ramande was superintendent at Hamilton Southeastern, Tony Cook was superintendent at Hamilton Heights, and myself at Sheridan. And one of the very first conversations we had in 2006 was how can we better serve our CTE kids? At that time, we were sending kids to Marion County to get CTE training. We were struggling with that, and that structure was broken. Since 2006, we haven't changed a thing. In October of 2020, Judge Nation came and asked to meet with the Hamilton County Superintendent. So this version of the Hamilton County Superintendent met with Judge Nation in 2020 and said, what can we do for you? And now that I'm, in that first meeting, I didn't say very much in 2006, but now I talk a little bit more. In 2020, we shared that we've been looking at this the wrong way. When we talked about doing CTE programs in Hamilton County, we really felt like we needed to build a brick-and-mortar structure. I remember in 2008, I was trying to build an elementary school, and Sheridan, I was trying to pass referendums and petition remonstrances. Nobody was really lining up to build a new structure in Hamilton County for a brick-and-mortar structure for that. So when we talked to Judge Nation, we really thought about, we're doing this the wrong way. What we need to invest in is human capital, and somebody that can lead this process to bring all these kids that are going to Marion County to get this training back into Hamilton County. Right now, there's 300 kids in Hamilton County that go, that leave this county to go to Marion County to get that training, and there's another 15 or 20 that go to Madison County to get that training. Sheridan and Heights both start a bus about 11 o'clock and drive those kids to North Central High School to get that training. What we believe we can do is, through the support of the county council, is for the next two and a half years, provide funding for executive leadership that would be able to create our own Hamilton County Career Center. And do that in a way that's modeled after Vigo County, where the counties, the school corporations all work together and share resources. We've got some, well, we've got the best programs at Hamilton Heights, but there's great programs across the county that we can share. There's a great nursing program at Noblesville. There's an unbelievable construction program in our building at Hamilton Heights. We've got some really cool ag things going on in Sheridan. If we coordinate that together, then we can really make a difference. And, because we've got a lot of chips in our building, and what we're not doing now is creating opportunities for chips. And I want to make sure that, I emphasize, this is not an either-or program. Kids that go to Hamilton Heights, I don't line them up as freshmen and say, you're going to college, you're not going to college. That is not the intent of this program. What I want to be able to do with our seniors that graduate is create opportunities to go anywhere they want and do whatever they want, because the education they've got at Hamilton Heights. And right now, I'm not providing that full exposure to them, because we're limiting in our program. So this idea is different than any way we've done it before, but there's real hope for the first time, as I share with my colleagues and represent them tonight, that we can actually get this done and move forward to create this Career Center that will really impact not only the needs that you're hearing from businesses and industry as they work to get workers, but number one, and what I do is impact kids. That's my job. And this will impact the students of Hamilton County, allow them to go off and do great things. I'd like to introduce Dan Clark, because a huge part of this opportunity is the partnership we've had ongoing with Ivy Tech and the great things we're already doing together, but also with the facility that is Ivy Tech and the leadership that is Dan Clark. So, Dan Clark.
Thank you for including Ivy Tech in the discussion. I want to talk about two significant benefits for students and families that this Center for Career Achievement can accomplish. The Indiana Commission for Higher Education has done an analysis that concludes that 62% of the jobs in the future in Indiana require some education beyond high school. But the subtext of that is, half of those jobs require baccalaureate or graduate degrees. Half of those jobs require associate degrees, industry certifications, or apprenticeships. Now, the ratio might be a little different in Hamilton County, but it would not be different in the region. The point is, the Center for Career Achievement can provide better information and broader opportunities about all the possible ways to achieve successful, self-sustaining careers. Beginning in middle school, students can learn that skilled trades, apprenticeships, military service, industry certifications, and college degrees can all lead to successful and self-sustaining careers. But if that's true, if students need education and training after high school, then there has to be a way to get better completion rates in less time with lower cost and almost no debt. And the Center for Career Achievement can scale a model to do that. It can align both secondary and post-secondary programs and funding so that students can start post-secondary education and training in high school, earn both high school and college credits, apply those credits to industry certifications or associate degrees, and then transfer those degrees to bachelor's degrees. We currently have 70 high school students coming to Ivy Tech. In the pandemic, quite frankly, they're the only ones that have come, because they couldn't do welding without being at a welder, couldn't do auto tech without having a car to work on, and couldn't do criminal justice without the ex-shareiff we hired to teach them hands-on methodologies in criminal justice. In each of those programs, these students are earning, are taking four college courses that count for high school credit. They also count toward industry certifications and/or associate degrees. There is no cost to the families or the students. The cost to the school corporation is 20 to 30% less than the current Career Center models, and the benefits to the students result in 25 to 50% more credits. That model can be scaled, and thanks to Dr. Arrowood and the other superintendents who have helped us put this small prototype together, the Center for Career Achievement can do this for hundreds of students. So, thank you very much.
So as, at the end, Brenda Myers was going to be speaking. She had a family emergency come up. I've asked Judge Nation to come forward to fill in the blanks and kind of say, answer the question of, well, why are you coming to ask us? I know many of you probably already looked, so.
Well, this is the first time I've been in front of the council as an elected official that I haven't been nervous.
You're not done.
Still are. Just warming up.
Well, I think the point that has been made here is just, when you have the school corporations, when you have business, when you have everyone working together, we can go ahead and give these great opportunities to our kids. And again, how many kids do we know that, either in our own families or in the community, that don't know what they want to do? This gives them the opportunity to see what they can do, and then to go ahead and to see what they like. It may lead from, and I think Superintendent Arrowood would tell you, that he's got three individuals who said they don't want any more school after high school, that are now at Purdue in construction management. So it's one of those things that they may not know what they want. This gives them the opportunity to do it. The cost to Hamilton County right now is, when you add the six school corporations, what they pay, and what we lose in Perkins Funds is $1.5 million a year. That could be used to go ahead and to be sure that our businesses go ahead and have internships, that our schools have it. And I think it was referred to earlier, instead of building a brick building like they have in other locations, each of the school districts are going to take on different careers. So in other words, it may be welding for Southeastern. It may be construction for Hamilton Heights. And what we will do is make it an opportunity for kids to go ahead and move to those different locations so they can see what they want. We can use those monies here to help our kids, to help our businesses, to help go ahead and to show exactly what it is. When they do the dual credit, we don't have, we, of course, eliminate that for the school debt, but it helps them to reach their highest potential. We also want to open up an opportunity for kids that did not graduate, or kids that are 19, 20 years old, who have decided, no, they now want to go back to school. Well, in this Career Center, we're going to have opportunities to bring them back in to get them into careers. So that, the plan is that. The ask is, and I think it's on the, right there, the ask is, now, this is a two and a half year project. So that $425,000 is two and a half years of total cost to the county. And like I said, that doesn't even equal one year of Perkins Funds that we lose. So that's our hope. After the two and a half years, the program's up, we've got the coordination of the high schools, it's no longer within our budget.
Where's the bricks and mortar on here?
Bricks and mortars, we're not going to have. We're going to have it at the various schools.
All the schools have decided to come together and offer opportunities at the individual schools.
So we don't duplicate that kind of a service. We don't go ahead and put all those other costs. The schools aren't going to absorb that, and then that way, we can have the best, we can put our money back into our kids.
So it's $75,000 in 2021?
Right.
And 150 the next two years?
Correct. And plus $50,000, I think, for just alignment and enrollment, to be sure. The first part of this is just to comply with all the federal and state requirements to create a center here. And that's going to take a lot of work with our school corporations and with this coordinating person to go ahead and get that. And I mean, you know, the things of how do we get kids from Sheridan to Southeastern, the bus routes, and how do we coordinate all that? So it's going to take us a while to do that, and that's the first part of it. But then the second part is, how do we get the kids involved and enrolled? I know that in Westfield, when they opened it up to Marion County for healthcare workers, they had less than six to seven kids a semester taking that. When they opened it up in Westfield and took over that program, they've had traditionally more than 50 per semester. And that's what our hope is. We want to go from 2% of our student population to 30%, 40% that have the opportunity just to see what they want to do in their careers. So that's the hope.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I fully support what you guys are trying to do here. I myself am a product of Ivy Tech and have spent my whole career in the trades, and as you probably know, the average age of a plumber in the United States is 56 years old. Okay? So that kind of tells you, oh, that's old guys are aging out, and there are too many guys in the pipeline. But I do also want to say, it isn't like Hamilton County's been sitting on our hands. We wrote the check for the Ivy Tech building. $10 or $12 million, we just paid for it. So it's not like we haven't been involved with the community for chances for post-high school education. Why is this in front of us? Why is it, Hamilton County needs to write this check?
I would say that this is the next step, since we took over the, since we did the commitment to Ivy Tech.
Well, it's about the building. We spot the building.
Right. Well, but again, we are giving the opportunity to the schools. We're giving the opportunity to our workforce. We're also involving our workforce development and our economic development, and we're involving our tourism, because we want to go ahead and to select and bring more corporations in there. My answer to you would be, we want to go ahead and be sure that our businesses here in Hamilton County are served. We want to be sure our kids are served, but we want to be able to go out to other communities and bring other corporations here, because we have this effort.
Okay. That answers that question. So how do we get the Perkins money?
Once it has been designated as a Career Center, then those monies come to us.
That's all I got.
I have a couple.
I was easy on you.
I have a couple of questions.
I'll remember that.
Go ahead. What, I see, this is wonderful. First, thank you for working. Thank you, everyone, for working on this. This is wonderful. Just, there's so many opportunities in this. That's where the, I see the challenges are going to be, is one of my questions, who and how do you decide which industries that you focus on the training for? How are you able to adopt or adapt to changes in the workforce that's needed out there? And is there opportunities for our business community, say, a company coming in that has a certain skilled workforce they need, that they can pay into this and have that training be part of it?
Well, and again, that's why the chambers are here. Because we have to be sure that, yes, you know, two years or five years ago, would we have thought IT was going to be exactly what it is? No, not to the level it is. We need to go ahead and constantly reach out to the business community and find out so that we can go, as I think either Jack or Bob said, we can go back to the junior high and the high school, lower levels of high school, to say, kids, here are the opportunities that are going to come about in Hamilton County. Here's what you can expect to earn, all those type of things. So yeah, it's going to be one of those things that we are going to adapt based on the economy, based on exactly what the needs of our kids are and what our businesses are.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, I think part of this is, it's an understanding of what our business's needs are, an assessment of where the growth is, and understanding where it's underserved. And I think that that's where the chambers are so vital, but it's not just the chambers, it's their members asking, coming forward and saying, this is where I need help. This is where I need support, and being engaged and involved in the program. This is a true transformational collaboration that is going to allow us to continue to be successful in Hamilton County.
I foresee you guys are going to have a problem, because there's going to be so many industries that are going to need and want your help. That's going to be the, it's a good problem, but it's still.
Well, and that's, you know what, that's a good point, but that's why it takes a leader, truly, someone that is at the top of their class, that can come in there and be able to handle the influx of ideas. You know, the support that we're looking for is really to find that leader that can help drive this. The schools are going to be providing the training in the classrooms, but it's getting someone that's going to be able to hit all the grant money, that is going to be able to work with the chambers, to see where the needs are, help people develop the programs. And that's where, you know, that's what that person's role is.
It's needed, though. Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I think it's an awesome idea. I really like it. The question I have is more of a financial one, is, or are those school corporations, what dollars are they, or are they going to invest upfront? So if the county does, I can't see that far, 400 and some thousand?
425.
425. Do you have a dollar amount that the schools are putting forward, or is there an amount yet?
There is, we have discussed an amount, but we don't know exactly what the cost is going to be to bring about those programs. They have committed to bring about the programs, to do whatever they need to do within their corporations, because again, if all of a sudden, all the students were going to Hamilton Heights for construction, they would have to add and do things within their, they are committed to that, to go ahead and to build this within their system. And that will not ever be a county expense.
So is this going to be set up as a non-for-profit? Is it going to have its own?
It's going to, in the final analysis, it will be the same as the other Career Centers in the state of Indiana. It will be a separate Career Center that will be under a school corporation.
It's a CTE district, correct, that we have to create?
There's quite the bureaucracy to create a CTE district, which is what Hamilton County would be paying for, is to hire that person, that talented person that Concedo and I, Alec Vander, talked about, battle through that bureaucracy for like two and a half years to create that CTE center, so all that Perkins Funds comes back in to Hamilton County, and those students are housed in Hamilton County instead of going elsewhere to get that CTE trade. In terms of the county superintendent's support of this program, we would prefer that Hamilton County pay for this program, because we think the benefit is to Hamilton County students. We have discussed opportunities, if that doesn't happen, how we can raise funding outside of our traditional general ed funding to help support this. And that means we, may I help this write a Duke grant this week? There's other processes that we may be able to find that money. Ideally, though, when we had a conversation with Judge Nation, what we said was, the best way to get this started would be that Hamilton County will fund this, because this is an investment in Hamilton County and our students and going forward. So ideally, that $450,000, $425,000 is all a check written by you guys, how you write checks, but if not, then we'll figure out a way to do this. But we need, we need Hamilton County and your entity as a partner to get this started, because we've never been able to get it started before, to be able to fund that person.
And just to be clear, they are investing dollars. They're investing resources from the teachers, the people that are running the programs. That's where the majority of the money is. They're going to be ones running that. We're looking to help fund. They're going to be ones running that, we're looking to help fund the, the person that's going to be run, the coordinator, that's going to do it. And, and it's a short-term, short-term grant money, so until the, until the money can catch up with, with what they're going to be out there doing.
I'm getting, sorry, got him.
Just one last question. So if, if the county council does approve this money, whoever is running the operation, will they come back to us on an annual basis, give us updates where the program is? Some kind of follow-up? So we know the money is working?
In fact, what I, what I would hope is as we develop this, every time we take a step, as with the chambers, as with the schools, yes, it's going to be very transparent of exactly where we are, how far we are along. I mean, we are looking at it as a two and a half years. If things, if federal government and the state government moves faster, which I've never known them to do that, it may not, it may not be that amount, but we wanted to be sure that we gave ourselves enough time there to be sure to get the product that we wanted. And, and so, yeah, oh no, it's going to be an update all the time.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
I, I think this, this sounds like a good idea, I like what you guys are doing, I commend you for that. But I do want to play a little bit of devil's advocate because there's nothing so permanent as a temporary government program. So I mean, how do we know that we're not going to keep seeing the bill for this after three, four, or five years? I mean, how do we know that?
Well, I mean, from my standpoint.
I mean, is this a whole new county government program? And I'm fine, and I'm just curious, because I've seen that happen before.
Well, I, I understand that, but I give you my word.
Go ahead.
And, and, and.
Oh, we went to that card, okay.
Well, but, no, no, really, if this doesn't work, it doesn't work. We're not going to have the center. There, there's no need for, to.
No, I mean, once the centers, I'm talking about, once the centers up, this is up and running.
Investments, right? If you look even and go back to the, the current existing spend, right? So there's already investments made by each school corporation.
I get that part of it, I get that part of it.
Okay, so.
Yeah, that's, that's not, I'm, I'm just saying.
They'll probably find that out in their research and development phase of, it's going to be too much and we can't do it, I guess, worst-case scenario, but I don't get that.
Yeah, it's up the experts.
So the way the CTE centers work is similar to our special ed cooperative. So we, Hamilton Heights, Noblesville, South Madison School Corporation, Sheridan School Corporation, Franklin Lappel School Corporation are all part of a special ed cooperative. The director of that special ed cooperative is a guy named Dr. Steve Warrenhoff. Steve's housed at Noblesville at their educational service center. Steve directs those programs for all five sending schools, and all those programs are within our schools. We have programs at Hamilton Heights that share kids from Sheridan, things like that. That's how the special ed program works in terms of a cooperative. The CTE program would be exactly like that. At the end of the two and a half years, as Judge Nation said, this person, the director of this program, would then be housed at one of the six county schools. The funding, that federal Perkins funding that they have been able to allocate and designate to come back to Hamilton County instead of going to, right now, Washington Township in Indianapolis, that money would be then funneled into one school corporation, which would be the local education authority. And then they would funnel that program, that, those fundings back out to the schools who are providing the, the programs, or potentially Ivy Tech because they may be housing some of the programs that the schools currently don't provide. There are some programs that have been provided outside of Hamilton County that we're not providing and have not created inside of Hamilton County. At the end of this two and a half year program, this director would be able to create those programs either in our districts or at Ivy Tech, hire the teachers, be able to get our kids there to get those CTE dollars to stay in Hamilton County, but also get that training that's happening elsewhere to hap, happen in Hamilton County. So as Judge Nation said, at the end of two and a half years, if this, if this model doesn't work, we'll stay where we are. But we are very confident that this model and with the appropriate and the right person leading this process, that in two and a, two and a half years, over a million dollars a year is going to be staying in Hamilton County that's now going elsewhere. And there will be a massive increase in the amount of students that are being served in CTE programs that are being served right now.
And served by, by the actual educational facility, educational.
Right, and they'll be at the school because as Judge Nation said, he talked, I think it was the, the Westfield program, our construction trade program started with ten kids. My problem now, and we created, we used our capital funds to create a construction lab for Eric Fisher, who's our teacher. Next year, he's got a hundred and thirty kids enrolled in my construction trades program that I need to build another wing. We could share those kids with other schools, he's got front-end loaders parked outside of our high school right now that he's going to use a demonstration project, and, and he's got a virtual, he's got some grant money to get some virtual demonstration things. We can share that with our Hamilton County neighbors as well, or help provide that training to other schools to be able to do that, staying, keeping that in Hamilton County.
So can you guarantee me ten to twelve minutes and you have tripled that?
I, I wasn't up here for ten to twelve minutes. I was less, I was personally less, it was everyone else.
Sure. At this point, my assumption is, gentlemen, you wanted to give us this information, I assume you will take it forth to the next channel, which would then probably come back to us in June.
Yes, the goal would be, is that this was informational?
Yep.
More informational probably than you wanted, at least twice as much. But that, this would go in front of finance committee and come back in June with, from my perspective, a favorable recommendation and, and a, and a opportunity to fund this opportunity for Hamilton County.
Perfect. Thank you all for attending and shedding light on, I think, what's a great collaborative, so we appreciate it and we will see you back in June. Thank you. Okay. Steve Nation, I'm going to give you some more time to talk, sir.
Well, and I'm going to give the floor to Sue for comments.
Non-for-profit.
We, we have been working, and Ken Alexander, with some of the knowledgeable professionals in the nonprofit world here in the county, have been working, had started work on a process and procedure for our county nonprofits to come before us to get funding every year. He's done a lot of work, and then Judge Nation and I have joined in and been tweaking a lot of the work that Ken has already built on. And we have some, some forms and pro, and procedures that we'd like to share with you, that we will be sharing with you about how we want to move forward this next budget cycle. And the goal is so that the nonprofit organizations in our community, they know what types of things, what our goals are to fund for, for nonprofits, and what kind of information we need, and so therefore, somebody is not coming up in front of us where it's not an initiative that we plan on, that's within our goals and that we plan on funding. So we want to streamline that, make it easier for all of us and all of them so that it is efficient and everybody knows what we want. And it's, Ken has done a lot of work on it, and Judge and I have tweaked it, and we'll send that all out to you.
And this is, this is much needed, so thank you for doing that, by the way.
Yes, I do, the three of you, thank you for taking on that. I guess my question, when do you anticipate sending those to council for review?
Within the next couple of days.
Okay.
So, and, and just so I don't get mixed up like in the joint meeting, we're not talking about the federal.
Right. These, this isn't the American Recovery Program, a rush program.
General fund stuff, yeah.
And that, we even have a disclaimer at the top of the form, this is not that program, this is the annual program that we have.
Great, thank you very much. We'll move on to item E, safety and risk new position request. Is there a motion to approve for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
What discussion do we have?
I would, I, I've read the stuff and I, I don't have any real opposition to it. I would like to encourage the county to save their full-time people to budget time. Coming in and asking for full-time people in the middle of the year is problematic, but that's all I got to say.
Is there any additional comments or?
Is this the, this is the, for our emergency man?
Safety, safety risk management. And the request is not for funding, the request is to go, to present the job description to WIS for classification.
You know, and I, I do want to comment on what he said. I get that we want to do budget hearings, but I, I don't think any of us anticipated, this is, this is in relation to what we've been dealing with, I would presume, right?
You sure you know what we're talking about there?
Right, the safety risk, I mean, he's going to tell me that. That's why I'm asking that.
Yeah, all the documentation attached gives you a broad perspective of everything that Stephen has been accomplishing in his, in his job since he was hired. Dealing with nine hundred and eight full-time employees and two hundred and thirty-seven part-time. And that's just one aspect of the job.
Is there any other questions or need for explanation from Dan?
So what are you asking for, to send it to where?
Permission to send the job description to WIS for classification, yes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded prior to, so now, all of those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item F, resolution CC zero five dash zero five dash twenty twenty-one dash zero one, declaration of official intent to reimburse expenditures for the garage project. Whoa, Mike Howard.
Should we combine G also?
Probably shouldn't.
No, I think we should have.
The, the first resolution that you just called number in, as you know, we are, sorry about that. We are in the process of, it was groundbreaking on Monday of the garage project. You've been very generous putting money toward this and appropriating money to it. Again, this is because of the historically low interest rates, and I, another opportunity where we may decide to fund this with some sort of debt instrument, either lease or bonds. The reimbursement resolution means that if you, when we get down the road, we can use those bond proceeds to reimburse ourselves for any expenditures after the reimbursement resolution. This does not mean you have to issue debt, it just means if you do, you can pay yourself back and reimburse your cash for those funds. Just a little foreshadowing, expect to be here next month. Kind of identified a revenue stream, an existing levy. We've got some bonds from 2013 that we're going to refund, there'll be some savings there, and good chance that the entire garage project can be funded without a tax increase and without getting into your cash or pledging cash in the future, but using the savings from the bonds we're refunding, plus maybe extending the debt service about three and a half years and get it paid for. So this allows us to, you know, start down that road, we can't close on the refunding bonds until October, but this reimbursement resolution, we're starting to shred money pretty quickly now, next week with the contractors. So with this, we will be able to reimburse ourselves. Are there any questions?
Can I get a motion in a second to approve the resolution?
Make a motion to approve, second.
Okay, go ahead.
My only question, Mike, just to clarify, if we do not do this, we cannot reimburse.
That's right.
That's the key, Steve, is that.
It's a, it's a one-way street.
Yeah, e, even if we paid for the cash, never, if we want the opportunity to issue bonds later to reimburse ourselves, we've got to pass this now.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, G, resolution CC zero five dash zero five dash twenty twenty-one dash zero two, declaration of official intent to reimburse expenditures for State Road Thirty-Seven project.
So moved, second.
It's moved and seconded. Let's have some discussion.
Same issue, the project with the cost overruns on State Road Thirty-Seven. I know your committees have been working with highway department, trying to keep an eye on this. I don't think I can find another revenue stream laying around somewhere. It would probably, most likely be a, an income tax financing or bond because you cannot use property taxes to pay debt service or pay the cost of roads. Our agriculture forefathers blessed with that statute, and it's still on the books. But this is, again, this is an opportunity down the road, I can assure you that there's still efforts to get some more money from downtown to help defer some of these costs with the state. And we probably won't be looking at this for, for a little bit, but I know Brad's got, there's some extra parts of the project going to be bid later this year. And we'll have a little better vision of what we're doing, but again, the one-way street, if we don't pass the resolution, we can't reimburse ourselves. If we decide not to issue bonds.
Go to it.
We're still where we are.
Any other questions regarding this? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
No.
One no.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike Howard.
Thank you.
At this time, we will move on to additional appropriations, reductions, and transfers, and we'll open the public hearing concerning these additional appropriations. Item A, fund one thousand on the general fund. We have multiple requests here. Item one is the auditor one forty-four amendment and an additional in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars. Beaver was the sponsor, do we have a motion to approve for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Uh, this is for, it says grant administrator position?
Yes, and I was here last month, and so this is catching the paperwork up with what I did last month.
Any other?
In your motion, does that include one, two, and three?
Those we are doing separate.
Yes.
Based on the assessment from earlier, although three will have an entire combination for all of those items, but separate.
Three. Three has several different items.
But those can be, we can get, let's go through, let's stick with one first.
Okay.
Okay? Any other discussion regarding item one? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Item two, clerk one forty-four amendment. My understanding is that this is a transfer and they did use the formula, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Kathy's here though, she really wanted to come up.
Did you want to, really? Congratulations on your award as well.
Thank you very much.
Motion, we got that approved, okay. Item three, under the commissioners, there's a benefits grant administrator position, mental health initiative, and ARPA retirement benefits. This is related to insurance and then obligations that we had previously committed to. Those can be combined unless you would prefer to go line by line.
Just give me a, real quick, what, what the mental health initiative is?
So we had committed, and Steve may be able to, if I'm not mistaken, this was the agreement that was made.
With the Hamilton County Foundation, Community Foundation. They were going to fund a part of this, and this is to try to do an assessment of mental health across the county. And they're, they're paying thirty, we're paying the five, and Aspire is paying the other five.
And we had agreed to it though, previously, so it was, we're just now appropriating funds.
Now, Steve, you know there's a limit to how much one individual council member can request from the rest of the county, you know that, don't you? It's in that bylaw.
I'm pretty sure you'll tell me.
Didn't you see that in the bylaw part there?
Well, this actually, he's the one, he's making new rules right now, he hasn't got that back.
In all fairness though, it was something that was.
Just for, just for clarity purpose.
Yes.
At least Sue, motion to combine, I'll second that for discussion since we're already doing.
Are you comfortable with that?
I am comfortable with that.
He was just asking about item one before we combined, just so you know. Okay, so it's a moved and seconded to combine, one through three, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, is there a motion to approve all of the three under item three?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item four, EMA. You will see one, two, three, four, five, six different items under EMA. We can go individually.
I, I'll make a motion to combine them all.
I'll second that.
So moved and seconded, to combine all six items under EMA, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve all six for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded, we have Shane here, does anybody have questions specifically related to all of these items?
I had a discuss, I don't know about the way.
I have to.
Discussion with Shane previously.
Yes, I, yeah.
I think I'm comfortable with what he's trying to do. It's on him to make sure that this goes the way he told us it was going to go.
Well, thank you, I greatly appreciate it. One thing I, I did want to bring to your attention is that we've requested so far, or we've been reimbursed with money back to the auditor from FEMA for ninety-five thousand dollars from emergency management. So we're making sure that that money that you have allowed us, that you gave us to help run and support COVID act, or the COVID operations is continuing. The health department's gotten you thirty-one thousand dollars back, and then ISS, Chris was able to get thirty-four thousand dollars back from FEMA. So those checks are starting to come in and making good on our word to ensure that we're getting that every penny we can back from the federal government back into the county. into the County General.
Thank you, Shane.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Under the Sheriff, there are three items, 144 Amendment for K-9 Specialty Pay, 144 Amendment for Promoting to Fill Vacant Lieutenant, and 144 Amendment for Double Slot Merit Deputy. If you would like to do these individually, we can, or they could be combined.
Motion to combine.
Second.
So moved and seconded to combine, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve for discussion?
I'm motion to approve.
Second.
So moved and seconded for discussion, are there questions related to the 144 amendments with the Sheriff?
I, I had a, I'm sure everybody else did too, I had a conversation with the Sheriff about this. Sheriff, one thing I thought I'd ask, when we had that conversation, you have candidates in line to fill these slots as of right now?
That is correct, we have one candidate on our list to double, for the double fill of the deputy position, once that position is filled, we will have to start a new process, which takes several months, about six months to do that process.
Do you think you'll have any problem with, I know the rest of the country's having trouble recruiting policemen per se, have you ever experienced trouble filling slots for merit deputy?
We wondered if we would have that problem in this last process, but we had no trouble finding qualified candidates, it seems that places that do not support their law enforcement agencies want to come to Hamilton County, because they're supported by our officials and our community.
Those applicants are from other police agencies?
A lot of them are, yes, sir.
That's all I had.
Good question.
Any other questions for the Sheriff? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We will move on to item B, Fund 1023, HCAA requesting 2724, this is insurance, I'm sorry, PERF benefits under the ARPA that we would have done with the.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have Fund 1025, the Hamilton County Airport Authority requesting 190,000, amount available for appropriation is 616,823, is there a motion to approve for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded.
Sam here tonight? I don't see him.
Sam's not here.
Sam Bill's here. Basically, we're, this is the airport, inside the Air Force Budget, it's their capital, and they're going to do some paving and some, putting some water lines and stuff in, so they're asking for permission to spend money out of their capital account, because they got some projects under the board.
Perfect. Is there any other questions that Brad can answer on behalf?
Brad, is this anything about the expansion in the district that there, that has been, I know Zionsville, or Zionsville was looking at Boone County, was looking at some stuff to the west?
No, this is inside our fence.
So this is just additional structures that they might be looking to expand to?
Yeah, pavement, well, driveways and roads.
There's a row of hangars being built, and then we're going to pave some, some more parking lots, so we have more parking lot, and some other sewer water line configuration that has to do with those sets of hangars, which you already approved money to help with that, but this is other projects in relation to that, they're trying to go and try to do them all at the same time.
Any other questions?
They have.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item D, Fund 1053, HCSWMD requesting 22673, this also is related to PERF for the ARPA, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item E was emailed to you, it was not included in the packet, it is Fund 1159, the Health requesting 450,000, this is a vaccine reimbursement for the clinic from FEMA, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded, any discussion?
It's on the Stephen Nation Community Pathway.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're a little ahead of ourselves there, aren't we?
Yeah, he's got that right on there, it says, yeah.
Item F, Fund 1176, there is a request for an additional 300,000 for Community Pathway, is there a motion to approve for discussion?
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
So moved and seconded, is there discussion, or Steve, do you want to give any insights since you're the sponsor?
I am the sponsor, Brad is here, and he's got a few other items, Brad, if you can come up and make sure I don't misstate something here.
Sure, no problem, good evening, folks. The Stephen Nation Community Pathway, so aptly named, is the pathway that runs from Cicero to the, to the county parks along 234th Street, is an award that we recently received through the Governor's Next Level Trail Program, a very competitive program that was put on hold for a while due to, due to pandemic and the state of the county finances, but we were very fortunate to be one of eighteen awards out of, I think, sixty-two applications, we got a little over a million dollars to build this, this trail. So this trail was born out of a earlier study that was done that, that looked at connecting all of our communities in Northern Hamilton County, so Noblesville, Cicero, Arcadia, Atlanta, and then there was this spur that went over to the, to the parks, so that was a part of that program too. So, long story short, there was a lot of public involvement early on in that development of that overall trail program, a lot of public involvement and stakeholders from the communities, but through surveys and other things, this particular segment was the highest priority to pursue, so that's the one we pursued. We had tried several times through other avenues to get funding, Indianapolis MPO, namely, were not successful, but the Next Level Trail Program, we put together a good package, we failed the first time, submitted a second time, corrected some of the deficiencies that we thought we had in that application, and we were successful. So what for you tonight is the, the money to begin the engineering, to develop the plans, to make an award, our goal is to do that in twenty, this year, with an award later this year or the first of next year, and seeing construction of this trail then during 2022. That's the agreement that we have now with the DNR folks, who have given us this award.
I'd just like to tag on to what Brad said, and it involves several entities, one of them is Brendan Myers with the Tourism Bureau, and they contributed, what, 25,000?
Yeah, Brendan's contributing $25,000 to the, to the project as well, yeah.
Brendan. What, when this is all done, is this getting turned over to the Parks Department?
No, it'll be, it'll be a trail along the, on the road, and we, our trail, the highway trail, I guess, or, Highway Pass goes, it's in the roadway right away.
And, and just to be clear, the tourism's participation in this is to create a node at the campground?
Yeah, it feeds into their vision of a node with the White River Vision Plan they have at the campground, and that's why they helped support the application with a, with a $25,000 commitment.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is $18,460 for the HHPA Rail Crossings, is there a motion to approve for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded, Steve, do you want to give us, since you're the sponsor of?
Sure, it's just a rail improvement at 196th Street.
Okay, any questions?
Is there a rail at 196th Street?
Yes.
It still exists?
Yes.
Okay.
And it does need repair.
Okay.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is the MVH Restricted Transfer of $40,336.90, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
So moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G, Fund 1222 Communications, there is a 144 Amendment adding CTO Pay in the amount of $2,080, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded, is there any discussion? We're really quiet tonight. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two, under item G, is 144 Amendment, New Position Request and Job Description, is there a motion to approve for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded, is there any desired information that you would like to have provided, or were you guys given this insight prior to the meeting?
No, I'm, I'm assuming all this is paid for with 911 fees, right?
It is, that is correct.
There's enough of them now.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item H, Fund 1235, 2518 Lit Dedicated to PSAP Transfer in the amount of $2,000, $200,000, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Is this the same thing, 911 funds?
Yes. So moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item I, Fund 4508, 2018 HCRCRD Lit Revenue Bond requesting $22,997.
Is this a, are there possibilities to combine?
We are actually, number, item two has been removed from the agenda, so that can be struck, and it's just the one item under item I.
Yep, I'm seeing I, J, K.
No, I, no, J through N can be combined, but we're not, yes, we're not there yet, sir.
I, I motion to approve item I.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So moved and seconded, is there any discussion for Steve Schwartz regarding his sponsorship?
We got to hit him with something, don't we?
You do, ask him what it is. What is it, Steve?
It's payment for Loch Mueller's inspection of Lowe's Way.
This should be hopefully the last.
Should be the end of Lowe's Way.
If I, if I may jump in here, when we, when we spoke about this at the highway meeting, community meeting, this was money that was already planned for and appropriated, and at the end of the calendar year, it was not, they did not put all their bills in, and so when that money was not encumbered and passed over to the next year, this, this is the, this is, we're having to go back and add money in so that they can pay those bills that were already accounted for.
Cool.
Thank you, Ken.
I feel much better about that $25,000.
I feel better about it since Ken explained it better than, I'm just kidding, Steve.
Easy now, easy now.
I'm just trying to get some life in this group here. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now, Brad.
How, how far can we go?
You can go to N, sir, so J through N.
I make a motion, we combine J through N, as it's all tied into the same.
Yes.
Refunding process.
I have a second from Steve Nation, and again, this is basically unappropriate and re-appropriate due to the 2021 bond issuance, so it's just a bookkeeping matter. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion to approve the combination?
Oh, thank you, I guess we didn't do that now. So moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Do you have everything you need now for that combo and approval? Okay.
Good boy.
It's a long night.
Item O, Fund 4907, Highway Coat, you can combine these two, there's a 144 Amendment and a Job Description Update, is there a motion to approve to combine?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded to combine, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, is there a motion to approve the two items?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded, do we have discussion? Anybody want to have a, nope, seeing none, just as a note of reference, on the 144 Amendment in the bottom left corner, there is an error, it should say LTC, LTCD to E, I believe it is, states the same LTCD, so just note that. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 4918 Youth Assistance Program requesting $29,077, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Andy, you want to explain this real quick?
I would be happy to. This is to pay for benefits for our youth assistance coordinator in Noblesville, I'm not sure if she went from single to family or, or what the variation could be, but she is selecting family benefits, and this is in order to cover that insurance. Is there any other discussion or questions, Fred, Glenn?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Funds 9122, Interpreter Fund Transfer, it's a reimbursement in the amount of 62,861.81, it's $81, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Lot of people.
Okay, we will move on to announcements. We close the public hearing, please. Oh, sorry, I apologize, we will now close the public hearing, that's not on the bottom of my sheet anymore, can we add that as a reminder?